All my kids could have like taken a nap at nine o'clock.
It was light when I was going to work.
I know, exactly. I had to turn on the headlights again and it's just like.
Let's go with that at least.
Like later today.
I'm sunrise for a few days when I have to go to leave at six o'clock.
I hate it like that.
Oh, I don't see it anymore.
Call me to order first up, Pledge of Allegiance.
One pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So where this is a special meeting, the only thing on our agenda is some budget work. But aside from that, because we always have to have public comment. And I don't see anybody here from the public. So I'll just tell those who are watching online that you can reach out to us anytime via email. There's on our website in introduction to public comment to give you an explanation on how public comment works. I'm not going to read that tonight since we have nobody, don't have anybody here to, for public comment, but please check that out. And you can reach out to us anytime via email. So. With that being said, public comment is closed. We'll move on to our only business is new business of the proposed first draft of the 2025 and 2026 budget summary, revenue, summary and revenue sheet.
Thank you. First thing that you might find interesting, Amanda and I put this sheet together, which is fixed cost. And also some costs that are unfunded mandates that you could just get a global picture, global view of what some of those pieces are. So. Just quickly go through this so that you can see it. The first line that I would bring to your attention is that first line on the salaries and benefits. And when you look at these lines in front of you, you know, we call them fixed. I mean, they fluctuate, but there are things you have to have is what kind of what we mean by that. So if you look at the salaries and benefits, you'll see the difference between FY25 and FY26. And you'll also see that about 79% of the budget salary and benefits is a significant number. You look at the next line, the debt service line, you'll see that that line has decreased. And we're getting closer to that high school bond being paid off. That high school bond is done in 26, 27. So you'll see a decrease there. The fuel oil, we did well during the times that we were in. You know, that accounts for 55,700 gallons of fuel. We got it for $2.699 per gallon, which is good. Versus what we paid last year, which was 282. However, we've already had a phone call from our current provider. Who is saying any additional oil that we receive this year, we will pay a 10% tariff on which we are not budgeted for. So that is fortunately, we're getting close to spring, so that's not going to be a whole lot. However, that's a number that's looming out there in terms of moving forward. We've already heard from the company that we took the bid from. That there could be additional costs and they may not be able to hold the amounts that we bid on. So that's kind of a cloud right now.
And you said the tariff is on things remaining for school year 24, 25?
10% on what's remaining. So if we order oil right now, we'll see, we will see a 10% tariff on that.
We don't know for sure for next year.
Correct.
I mean, how long may I know? And right now we don't have anything budgeted for tariffs for.
No, we do not.
This budget order.
We do not. You'll see that gasoline again, that's down a little bit. Propane is down a little bit. Electricity is down a lot, 24,954. And the reason for that, as we had mentioned, this is the first year that we feel we can adhere some savings on our solo project. We reduce our electrical costs to the high school by $10,000 this year in our budget. We did the same thing at the elementary school, $10,000. And at the junior high, we went five, this is a smaller, smaller facility. So we looked at some savings there. Water, sewer. Little bit of an increase. Telephone has stayed the same. So our mobile contract has gone up a little bit. Insurances have gone up. As we had mentioned during our budget presentations. So. The employees that you see that are cost shared, those are the employees that run the business office that went up a little bit as we discussed. A whole lot. If you look at tuition reimbursement contractual, those are teachers and techs courses that contractually they can, they can take if they wish to take them. That's gone down because we haven't had a lot of people submit requests to take courses. You see spent contracted services, these are services provided to our, for our special ed students. And that's gone down a little bit. These are things like interpreter, physical therapy, occupational therapy, tutoring, those types of things. The next line is that paid family medical leave, which is one of those unfunded mandates that we talked about, that we are dealing with this, this coming year. And then the sub pay increase is something that we felt we needed to increase those lines. Due to our expenditures and some other moves that we're trying to make in order to help this budget. And so you'll see that number that's there at the bottom. Which again, 90, about 90% of our budget we call, we say are fixed costs, but there are things that we don't have a whole lot of wiggle room to work with. So that's that sheet.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Absolutely.
The change in salaries and benefits. Can you remind me what, what, what caused the difference in the salaries and benefits? Was that because of pay raises or that type of thing, contractual pay raises basically?
Correct, correct. Each, each contract that we have, each group is received some raise because they're under contract. So they receive a raise.
So they receive a rate.
Correct. And then we are also.
Step increases and things like that.
Yep, yep. And we're also under, we're in negotiations with the teachers as well. And we'll be in negotiation, which is the largest group that we have. And we're in negotiations with the custodial group, which is a smaller group, but we have those two groups to negotiate this year.
And that number does include the 10% of insurance as well.
And okay, that's what I was going to say that.
And it is current.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have no control over that part of the increase rate. I mean, other than, you know, firing people, other than that.
Basically, yes. The next sheet that I'd like to share with you is at the last meeting. Dave didn't get the first sheet, did he? That one's for Dave because he didn't get.
We all got that.
I'm sorry.
No, Meg got it.
She got it.
Yeah.
What's that? One, two, three. So the last time we met, we did not have a summary revenue sheet for you. We went back to the drawing board and we, we said we were going to look at some adjustments that we could make. For your directive and we thought also for ours, because we have always brought a budget that's been vetted to you. And we did the same thing this year. I want to make it very clear that the adjustments that you see here aren't the only adjustments that have been made in this budget along the way. The administrators meet with their, with their leaders, their team leaders, then they then meet with Amanda and I. We look at each of these lines. We do three year averages on the lines to see how we've spent money. And if you look down through the various cost centers, you'll see negatives all over the place. So there's been some reductions in an attempt for us to bring a budget that is very much fiscally responsible. And I think you'll see that tonight as we get into the next sheet, but I did want to show you this piece here. The first line you'll see a minus, a minus 25, 760. It says technology position to school year. You'll remember that we hired a person that we were going to share services with, with Vassaburo last year. We were going to have the person three days a week. Vassaburo is going to have the person two days a week. It was going to be a full year technology position, meaning into the summer as well. And we were going to receive a revenue from Vassaburo for that work to occur. Vassaburo was, was not able to get this position in their budget. So what we did is we took the full year, condensed it to a school year. And so what you see here is the savings from going for a full year. Three day a week person to now a school year, five day a week person, if that makes sense.
So nobody lost their job because Vassaburo was unable to.
Correct. We've never really filled this position. We've been looking all year and we haven't filled it. So it's, it's been, it's been tough. Maybe we'll have better luck now that it's just here. Yeah. The next line you see is additional money for subs. We feel as though we need to do that. For a number of reasons, you know, we had the, we had the, you, you had the legislation that said that in this coming year, minimum wage, that 125%, well, so you're going to have ed techs starting at 1865 an hour. That means they're going to make $128 a day roughly. Your subs right now are making 115. So we need to look at that and say, what's the adjustment going to be so that you make sure that you get subs coming to the school district. And again, we always work with Waterville and Vassaburo because we all support each other. We all use the same people. So those are conversations that we need to continue having, but there is money in that budget for that. The sprinkler system that's there, Corey talked about that. That's, we have, we've done one section of that already. We need to do three more sections, two more sections or three more?
Two more.
Two more. And so you'll see a minus there and that's because we're going to try to get that done using another funding source. You know about our, our billing for services, for certain services through with students. And that money is not something we can count on. It's, but it is, it is a funding source that we can use for one-time purchases, not something that you would use, you know, count on every year. So we're going to try to keep with that with that source. We talked about a computer lease. You remember Will had $94,400 in there for that lease. What you're seeing there is a reduction of 66,951. That's going from purchasing the computers to going to a lease. So that'd be the savings if you, if you lease them rather than buy them. The summer school Title I, we have some, a little bit of extra money in Title I that we need to use up. And so for this year's summer school, we're going to use the, some Title I funds to pay for that. Other reductions from Title I, these are things that I've been able to, you know, looked at. Maybe these are things that we can buy out of this budget, like such as books or materials using Title I funds to help reduce the costs in our local, in our regular local budget. The teacher negotiations piece, that's an amount that we feel we needed to make an adjustment. And we went to an executive session on that the last time we had a meeting. And that was due to being able to make sure that we have the flexibility during negotiations to remain competitive with other school districts around us. The ed tech two, that is a cut. That is a position that we currently had this year. And that is a position that the individual left not too long ago and we didn't replace it. And we've been having conversations about how do we, how do we make this work? It's, it's, it's not something that we can easily get rid of. But it is something that we're looking at. How do we, how do we continue to support our students with the people that we do have? And how do we use the substitute lines to continue to support what this individual was doing? And we're in hopes that we get higher pay in the substitute lines, that we have a better opportunity to attract people to, to do that kind of work. Let's move on, please, here. Teacher from local entitlement, that's LE to the local budget. So in local entitlement, we have three special ed teachers in that budget. And so we moved one of those special ed teachers into the regular budget. And if, and that's the cost to move the special ed teacher into the regular budget. But if you look at the line underneath, you'll see a minus $100,000 because we moved contracted services out of the regular budget into local entitlement. And the, and the difference between those two is a savings to the local budget. The next line, retired, resigning employees to unfilled. So what we've done in the past is we've looked at when somebody's going to retire and not come back. We look at budgeting for that position usually with a five years with masters to cover our cost. Some days, some years we do very well with that. We find somebody that's right on five years or four years or three years. Other years, it's, it's not as good. But we also budget five years with masters with a higher insurance rate. And they don't always take the higher insurance rate. So we usually end up okay when we do that. So we feel confident that we can get by with that. The other piece that you see there is an SRO adjustment. Tonight, the town council is meeting. I believe they have an executive session to talk about contracts and salaries. I believe the SRO is part of that discussion. I suspect there'll be an increase in the, in the SRO's salary. Once we hear what that increase is, we need to add that to this budget because it's not in here right now. And the other piece, which is a big question mark, is the insurance adjustment. As we have mentioned before, we have budgeted for 10% for that insurance. The word that we received is that the insurance is going to be as high as 17.89%. They're trying to buy that down. The MEA trust is trying to buy that down. They, they hope that the high is going to be 12 and a half. And the low may not be any lower than six and a half. We don't know and we won't know until April. So that's a, that's a big question mark for this budget right now. So, so the two pieces that are, that are not filled are what's that insurance number going to be? And the cost, the additional cost for the SRO. And of course, title funds, but I don't think that's something that we should spend a whole lot of time on right now because it's too many unknowns to, to worry about all of that.
And our placeholder for insurance is 10%.
It is. It is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
How much of the SRO do we actually pay for? Do we pay the school year's worth of salary and then the town picks up the rest?
I believe we pick up 75% of that person's salary.
That includes benefits in the whole line here?
It does.
Okay.
And why is that an unknown? Because we already have one.
They're negotiating the salary. So we suspect there'll be an increase.
Right.
So I need Jennifer Council to vote on the police contract tonight.
We'll eat 75% of it.
I'm sorry.
We will eat 75% of the increase.
Right. Yes.
Now, is that something that is negotiated between the school board and the town? Or is that just, you know, something that's ironclad? It's what we do or where is it codified?
Well, it's, it's, it's what we do because it basically they figure that we have them 75% of the time.
Okay.
For the school year.
Okay.
And that's school resource officer, if anybody's watching that might not know.
But didn't, didn't we have to, didn't the school resource officer need to be pulled back from the school last year?
Absolutely.
Did we get any refund for that?
No, I'm just, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no. We haven't, we haven't because that's one of those things where it's all one, one big bucket. And we try to support each other and help each other whenever we can. And that's one of those times that it would be similar to me calling Paul Fong and saying, we have a massive hole in the, in the parking lot, the driveway. If you have any extra asphalt, can you dump it in there for us? And if they do, they do. It's just one of those.
I just don't know how to tell what to do, something like that.
So that's, that's that story. So now the reason that you're here tonight is. So I think the first thing that I'd like to just bring to your attention is to look across the top and you look at 25, 26 school year. And so the request, the total request is that 21,152,240.01, which is a 4.52% overall increase from last year. And then I would bring your attention to the state subsidy line, which is that first line. You'll see that we received the 10,391,546,15. And then you'll also see that we received the 67,000,946,95 for being a service center. For a total in state revenues of 10,459,493,10. Then if you look at the next block where it says school revenues, we left the athletics pretty much alone. We did the same thing with the rental of facilities because they aren't big numbers. We never know. It fluctuates a little bit. The, the shared occupational therapist, that is a number that's been changed because that's, we know what the contract is going to be. So it's going to be an increase for us. The other small number there is the the courier that we have. She's our employee and she delivers the mail for the three communities. So that's, that's gone up in revenues a little bit. The next line is the shared maintenance director. That's the revenues that we get for Corey for doing the work that he does for Vassaburo. Then the next line is the state agency clients. And we left that alone because that didn't go, you know, we didn't get that much this year. We were, we were below in that line this year. But then the next line is the whopper for us. And that's our town tuition secondary. You'll see that that went from 534,930, what we projected last year to 750,000 this year. And the reason that that's going so well, I would like to think is that we offer outstanding option program for the students in Vassaburo who choose to come here. And the tuition numbers is set by the state and those numbers have gone up a little bit. Amanda and I were looking at this this morning with Paula Poole, who's the finance person in Waterville. And, and added another 6% to what we thought we were going to receive. Simply because that number changes a little bit. We use the number, but that number usually changes and that's what they, we end up using. So just to make sure that we're using this, utilizing it as well as we can. So if you look at that, that's 928,171,17. We still have 350 from the undesignated fund. We didn't use all of our undesignated fund last year. I'll tell you right now, I haven't seen the town report, but we didn't use it all because our revenues came in last year much better from Vassaburo than we anticipated. And our expenditures weren't as, as, they didn't get hit as, as hard as we thought as well. So when you look at, drop down to the bottom number. How do you pay for this 21,152,240 that we're asking for? You've got the 10,459,493 from state subsidies. You've got the 928,171 from school revenues. You've got 350 from the undesignedated. That leaves an ask of the locals of 9,411,475.74, which is a decrease from last year's ask. It's not flat funded. It's a decrease of $59,859.24 or minus 0.63%.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes. That is great.
What would that, what's the impact of that on the mill? Is that like a quarter of a mill down roughly?
Depends on what the.
Steve probably.
Yeah, yes.
A mill is a million dollars in revenue.
Okay, so that's.
That would be quarter of, not even quarter of a mill.
Yeah, maybe an eighth.
That's all right. I'm trying to think in my head.
You're right on that number, the mill.
Mill is a million dollars.
About a million dollars or something like that.
So 60,000 out of a million. So not very much, but.
But it's not going up.
But it's not going up.
Right. And that's more than.
Right.
Well, obviously the, I mean, obviously expenses are going up. It obviously do, but I mean, the tuition with Vassaburo is outstanding and I think that says a lot about what we offer. And this shows.
And you assume, you would assume that kind of line would continue too.
Well, it's been growing. I mean, I mean, at some point they're going to run out of students to send our way, but we'll keep asking.
But I mean, the state revenue may take a dive if the economy turns bad.
Yeah.
But parents in Vassaburo seem to want to send their kids here.
Yeah, it's a great sign for many fronts. I mean, obviously we think we have a good school system, so. And they believe that because they do have choice to go out of the business. They're choosing us. So I think that's very good. It says something about what all of you guys do every day and Chad must have a heck of a sales pitch, you know, good job.
So now this bottom number.
You and Tom, right?
That bottom number's impacted potentially. Will that, excuse me, this bottom number is factoring in 10% for insurance.
That's correct.
And we don't know the impact of any SRO adjustment on that.
That is correct. So those.
Someone that can eat enough.
Right.
And fuel.
And fuel, yeah.
The best case.
That's not unless.
Well, no, but I'm saying that could change that bottom.
The best case scenario would be your insurance comes in at six, which would be a.
That'd be huge.
And that would, that could potentially cover any increase in the SRO. So that would basically be a flat, keep it flat.
I think if your insurance came in at nine, it would probably cover.
Yes.
Yes.
SRO.
You think that 1% would do that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you have the buffer already of almost 60,000 for the SRO.
But like you said, I mean, there's still are, even if those things happen, there's still risk factors that.
Yeah, yeah.
Costs potentially that we don't know about. So that we have not added this budget to account for some of those things. In the just in case, and we're kind of like title funds, for example, is, that would be a big one. But the way things are going right now in Congress and their budgets or whatever, it looks like even if they plan on doing something, it probably won't fall within this budget year in a significant way. Or if it happens at all, because everybody across the country is going to be screaming at title pocket. So that's a unknown tariffs on fuel, as you mentioned, is, is an unknown. So that's well, between fuel, oil, the gas and propane, right?
Yeah.
I mean, all those together, it could be, you know, if it's 10% on all that, you're looking at another $20,000 or a little more than that, 22, 23. or a little more than that, twenty-two, twenty-three thousand dollars potentially more in tariffs that could get piled on. And again, insurance and.
Uh, when you say tariffs, are you talking about tariff and like the tariff?
Canada, because that's where we get a lot of our energy.
Because a lot of, the number one import into the state domain from Canada is fuel.
Energy, yeah.
And energy.
Our current provider.
Well.
Gets their, gets their oil from, from there. And so they are, they've notified us that, that they're going to charge us ten percent on future deliveries.
By far it's still, I saw some graph or whatever and it's like everything else is here and fuel and gas and whatever is like way over here on this line chart. I mean, it is by far the biggest import into domain from.
So one question, and maybe this is too far down into the weeds, but we're requesting, are we requesting title funds? Is that a?
Are you requesting?
Oh, do we request funds from the federal government for titles, title one, title two, title five?
No.
Or?
They just determine what the amount is?
Okay, so they determine what that amount is.
Are you applying to the state to get?
Yes.
Okay, and the federal fiscal year starts October one.
Right.
So does our request go against the next federal fiscal year? Or the remainder of where we're at now? Because we start Jan, July first and they start October first, so that's a, that's a gap. So.
Yeah.
Where does that?
Well, I think that's a big question depending on whether or not they do a CR or they actually pass the budget.
That's the million dollar question.
So nobody knows. Okay.
Just wanted to make sure that I wasn't.
But I mean, obviously it's going to be a huge hit for every state if title money goes away entirely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, I saw an article with Portland, it's five percent of their budgets. I mean, you can imagine what it means for so many places across the country besides just us and the state domain, which of course we're, we're not making any friends with the administration apparently, but, but, uh, you know, I would presume that that's going to be a hard sell to get by Congress to have significant cuts in title funds. They don't be devastating to locals like this. And the work needs to happen. I'm just, yeah, you know, kids that need that extra, need that extra. Big variables, but hopefully.
Any other thoughts or questions?
All right, one more question about this, back to the teachers' salaries and benefits thing. Is that, is that the normal benefit or increase? Do we normally have that kind of an increase in salaries and benefits?
So just to be clear on that too, it's not just teachers in that line, it's our entire staff.
Right. Yeah, you're right.
Which is a couple hundred people.
No, but I, and I'm not trying to get the point, but I'm just, I'm just curious as to know, is that, is that the typical increase you have about every year? And it's hard, it's obviously something.
What's the percent?
You'd have to be an actuary to predict what that's going to do in the next two or three years.
I mean, having been involved in many of these contracts, one thing I'll say is definitely with the rate of inflation that's happened over the last number of years, the rate of increase has been greater to try to keep up with inflation and give people a reasonable increase given the expenses that have gone up for everybody's households, but.
Well, but also in state mandates of base salaries for first year teachers, so that we have to take that into account too. And when that goes up, you have to make it equitable for.
Yeah, and that's, that's on the table with the legislature for raising the wage for teachers, which they did pass last year, but didn't get through appropriations, but.
Or take another shot at it.
But regardless of that, but honestly, if we're not paying teachers a competitive wage, then we're not going to attract them anymore. So we're above the, the state minimum for starting teachers now, but if we weren't, we weren't, wouldn't be hiring any. And, you know, we, we got to keep working for, you know. I mean, what they're asking for isn't, um, you know, is, given that it hasn't gone up, it's about forty thousand now and hasn't gone up for years, the minimum. Obviously, it's been a lot of inflation between when that was set. It's been a number of years now, I don't know how many, seven or eight years ago probably. And it hasn't gone up, the minimum, you know, so.
I just, I'd like to acknowledge the care and detail and work that has gone into presenting a budget that is asking less of the taxpayer than last year. And still providing buildings, staff and an education that is bringing in these, you know, kids from Vassavboro that could go anywhere. And that's something that everyone should be proud of.
Thank you.
And I was worried seeing the sprinkler system as a negative on here. I thought, oh no, hope we're not kicking the can down the road for our buildings, but we're also not doing that. So it's.
We're finding ways.
Finding ways.
Like Corey said, we, we can't not do, we have to do.
We're taking care of kids, students.
Yeah.
And educators and everyone that supports these buildings. And we are being mindful of the community and the taxpayer and I.
So if we come in with this budget and we get hit with a fuel surcharge and things of that nature, does that mean we take that out of surplus and next year we, we only have three hundred thousand to use instead of three fifty? Is that what, what would happen to that? If we don't put any contingency for fuel increases and SRO increases?
We, we would have to, we will adjust for the SRO increase, we'll have to make that adjustment.
But we will know that.
We will, we will know that and we'll need the insurance. But whatever we decide to put in here is what we decide to put in here. So if we, if we get hit by something in the middle of the winter we don't know about, the solution to that is you find it someplace else in this budget, which might mean a freeze on the budget. You don't spend certain things. That's the only way to get to that because you can't overspend what your, what your, what they've already gone to your allocation. So that would hurt if that happens. But we've never padded our budgets, for lack of a better word. We've come to with a transparent budget based on what our needs are.
And how conservative is our fuel placeholder?
How conservative?
Right.
We've, we have, we've gone out to bid on that. And our fuel is what the bid price is in here. So as long as things don't go.
But no contingency for like what Steve said.
Correct.
No contingency to tariffing.
Correct, not in here.
And this number is what you, you're not going to adjust that if that's what they're seeing on Thursday when we go to meet.
With the, with the understanding that we have insurance costs that we don't know.
And the SRO.
And the SRO.
Which we might as well change the SRO before then. Because they're meeting tonight. Yeah, yeah.
But you won't know the insurance.
We will.
By the time we present it.
That is correct.
That's a problem, is that?
Usually it's last few weeks in March, they give you the, what's up? The high number is going to be. And then you give your number like first week in April.
So the other question I would have is this is a, a decrease of point six percent. What was put in that as a placeholder for the budget they're working on for our increase? Do you know?
I do. Just out of curiosity.
Give me a minute.
Four percent?
Give me a minute. As a placeholder, they had school department, one million forty-seven, two seventy-five. So the placeholder was five point oh nine percent on the local, on the local side of four hundred and eighty-three dollars and three oh three.
Four hundred and eighty-three thousand.
Four hundred and eighty-three thousand. So we are.
Two hundred and fifty thousand ahead of that.
Yeah.
Well. Because we're mining.
More than that.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we're.
Five fifty.
Yeah.
Ahead of that. Half a mill.
Yep.
Yeah.
So even if we have to go up a little for those other unknown costs, we're still going to come in.
Below their placeholder.
Right.
By almost half a million.
Their placeholder did not require a tax increase, correct. For the town overall. Placehold did not require a tax increase and we're going to be half a million below that.
I think those two points are important to note.
Yes.
In a presentation.
To what you were saying, I mean, just maybe put a little bit of a bow on it. I mean, being on, you know, I go to have another meeting this Saturday, main school board association and it's, it's been, it's, it's good to be part of that and hear a lot of what's going on at the state level. They do a lot of advocacy work in regards to, there's two hundred and some odd buildings before the legislature. They go through the education committee and, and hopefully people understand what it is they're voting on. Do a lot of work to, to educate them on what the impacts and some of what they're voting on. But besides all that, having conversations with other board members from around the state. There's a board, there's a person that's on the, the commission that's looking at school construction funding. That's looking at various other things that are statewide issues. And the fact that we have what we have, the buildings that we have, we're attracting tuition students at higher levels every year. We have the buildings we have with the, with the minimal debt service of what it could be. Because the state does not have funding. There's a lot of, to your point, there's a lot of school systems out there who do not, I know I've said this before, but we're going to keep beating that one. There's a lot of school systems that don't put the money into their buildings that they need to, to maintain them. And now they're in a situation where they don't have the money to maintain them and they're not getting money from the state to replace them. And they've got some buildings in bad shape and they don't have a way out other than the local dollar at this point, a local dollar that they don't have. And I think we have done very well as a school system to get us to, to, to be in the position that we're in that we're maintaining our buildings at reasonable amounts of money, keeping very good buildings. And, and have the programming to attract tuition students. I say, I think that's probably the, one of the biggest things you can say, these kids, these families have choices and they're choosing. I think that says a lot. So I think we've hit the balance pretty well. And to be able to do that and come in with numbers like this, I think outstanding, outstanding work on part of the administration. All of you guys sitting out there for all the work you do to make that possible. And obviously Peter in the central office for putting this all together and coming up with this wonderful number and keeping the whole ship headed the right direction, so. Good job.
I would like to thank all of you administrators and Michelle and Corey. It's not easy to come up with your budget because I know there's a lot of things that you would probably like to have put in this budget to improve even more. But you try to be physically responsible as well as doing your jobs for being good administrators. Kudos to all of you. It's not easy. You're appreciated.
And kudos to Amanda for all of that.
Yeah, really. Amanda, I don't know, she needs to take vacation someplace like the room.
Seriously.
The number of times I walked in.
I thought that in the budget.
Yeah, really.
Number of times I walked in her office and said, what about, what about, she said, you have time to finish us?
Do we need a motion to accept this and move forward with it or is it?
We're not voting tonight because we don't have.
We don't have those two.
Final numbers. Steve.
Okay, looking towards the future, debt service went down seventy grand this year.
Yeah.
Is that the same number that's going to go down next year though, where our fees get smaller as it gets to the end of those bonds?
Yeah.
Yes.
So it's not going to be quite as much of the same as with the other bond, it will also go down a little bit.
Correct.
A little bit, yeah.
Correct, so in twenty-six, twenty-seven, you lose it altogether. But having said that, we're talking about buildings. Our buildings are starting to age. And so we need to have a plan to look at those buildings and, and talk about what is it that we can do to these buildings that will make them more energy efficient? That the efficiency that we would, that we would gain would actually pay for.
Pay for. So we ought to think about a capital.
Improvement.
Capital.
That's right.
April, April meeting, we're going to a presentation for you. Corey has met with EM.
EMC, Tom Seakins with EMC. And they put a, they did an evaluation, everything already.
So an April board meeting, we'd like to put that on the agenda so that you can hear about that because this would be the time with one bond. You know, expiring, even if you took a portion of that bond to.
Right.
To, to, to do a capital improvement plan. And I think you'll be very impressed with what you hear Mr. Seakins talk about at that April meeting in terms of how you can make sure your buildings.
Is there, is there ever been any consideration towards, pretty significant part of the budget is an electricity bill? Is there a return on investment for installing solar panels on roofs? That, has anybody ever done that, those, that math?
Yeah, we, the math that, that we did was with the solar array that we have.
We have, the school owns the solar array?
We don't own it, we're a partner.
Right.
And so this is the first year that we've seen some, we, we know what the savings are. We feel confident enough that we can reduce our electric bills by the amounts that we reduced it by about twenty-five thousand. So, well, you know, we hope that, that continues, who knows? But that's, it's.
But that's different than owning the panels.
It is, it is.
And, and some of the math I've seen, communities that have installed panels do see the return on the investment.
We have not looked into that.
I think probably along the lines of what Corey's talking about, it's been a number of years that we had, we've done some efficiency projects over the years. We replaced lighting and things like that. And obviously with the newer technology that's going on now, I'm assuming that that will be some of what he is going to bring forward. And I know the payback on that was, was pretty good. Uh, lighting was part of it, but I think it included some of the HVAC systems as well, efficiency in those when we did those. But it's been a while and now the technology is to the point where I'm ready to make the next leap. So. So definitely interested in that and we'll see where we go from there. So I think it's well done and hopefully the council.
Appreciate this.
Appreciate the budget.
You know, I think we, I gotta say, we appreciate they, I remember, you know, they have concerns about the tax rate and so forth and what's all that. And we'll say that we're making our efforts toward their concerns.
And the town does have some very large. Capitals. That's coming up.
Yeah, yes.
That, that, that station, it's been here since nineteen seventy something.
Oh, yeah, no, it needs to be done.
That's a multi-million dollar.
And some of the, you know, the Sunset Heights project and so on and so forth. So I mean, we've, the town has some needs that need to be addressed and they all cost money too. So, and as Peter indicated earlier, we are, you know, we're all in this together. So let's try to see what we can do to make it work as best we can and meet all our needs. Most cost effective way possible. And I think, you know, we're contributing to that cause and Chad. I think this, well, given what you indicated on the mill rate, I would think that would help them in what some of their needs are and meet some of the capital needs of the town, so. So. So we heard him and we're working on it and.
What time, what time on Thursday?
Six. Six o'clock at the library.
Get there early because there's not much space. Get there early because there's not much space. Seriously.
Um, I, I know they had...
This isn't just a workshop with them, right?
Well, it is a workshop, but for us it is a meeting because when we have a quorum, it's a meeting.
Yep.
Um, so, um, and there might be, um, you know, I don't know how much, they've had some people from the public at their, like your workshops, there might be some people there at this one too, so I don't know. You know, parking might be an issue or not.
But there wouldn't be any public comment though, yeah?
There has to be for us.
There has to be for us because all our meetings have public comment. But council has, it's entirely different, so they don't have to. So, um, we have to intertwine our agenda with their agenda, so in running that meeting. But we've done it before, so we anticipate. Should be good. All right.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. So before I ask for the vote, I would just reiterate that we have our workshop on Thursday and then our next regular meeting is the twenty-fourth right here. All right, all in favor of adjournment? Unanimous? Very good. Thank you all.